Hi, you ready, Mr. Jordan?
Yes, sir.
All right. I will call the city council meeting for Monday, April 22nd to order. Just over the roll call, please.
Atkins, Evans.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mizell.
Here.
Mutsler. Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Here. So we do have a quorum tonight. We'll start off with invocation by Reverend Don Anderson, Emergency Service and Chaplet, followed by our pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's bow, yes, for prayer. Most kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come to you today. We are so thankful for your many blessings and, Lord, for this beautiful day that you've given to our community. And, Lord, we thank you for all those that assembled here tonight. And, Lord, for those, we're thankful for those volunteers in our community. They're going to be honored this evening. Thank you for all those who serve and work in our community that just do their very best to just love on their neighbors like you would have us to do. And, Lord, we ask you to bless our council members tonight and our mayor. And, Lord, give them the wisdom, the discernment, to be able to make the right decisions. And, Lord, watch over and protect our fire, police, and EMS, Lord, as they work to protect our communities as well as all of the city workers. Lord, we love you, we praise you, and ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a couple signed in for, um, a couple of comments tonight. We'll start with Don Anderson.
He's already right there.
I should have looked up.
Mayor and council, I'd like to once again come before you and ask, or invite you to join us for our National Day of Prayer, Prayer Breakfast. It is sponsored by KTTK Radio, as well as some local businesses, and it's an opportunity that we do every year. It's signed by the President of the United States every year for the, I don't know how many presidents have done it for many decades. And I think now's the time, more than ever, we could all agree that our nation needs prayed for. Uh, we pray for our leaders, who are local, state, national, as well as pray for our military, our police, our fire services, EMS, first responders. We also pray for our schools, pray for our churches, and we pray just for our communities in general. And it is coming up next Thursday morning. The mayor is going to be there, hopefully, and it's 6:30, sorry, Mayor, AM. I haven't got it changed to PM yet. Breakfast is hard to do at PM. I'm all for it, but 6:30 AM next Thursday morning. It's always the first Thursday in May, so May the 2nd, 6:30 at the Mills Building, there will be breakfast provided. Everyone is invited to attend. We would like an RSVP, so if you could let me know, or you could also just, I can give you the contact information that you can contact to let us know how many's coming for breakfast, but we, we offer breakfast no charge. We'd love to see as many police officers, firefighters, city council, city workers, anybody that comes, 6:30 AM, and it gets over by 7:30, so everyone else can try to be at work at 8:00. Breakfast usually starts about 7:00, 7:15, so the program's not very long. We try to move it along, but it's, it's all layperson-led. People in our community, local leaders, and people who are just regular people out there serving the community every day are going to be leading in the prayers, and it's going to be a fun time. So hopefully you can come next Thursday morning, 6:30 AM at the Mills Center. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Don, and I'm looking forward to the breakfast, but not at 6:30 in the morning, like I said, but.
And I agree.
But thank you, thank you very much. All right, Brett Strickler.
Meeting, Mayor, City Council. I'd like to make a comment on Council Bill 6671, the proposed ordinance to limit to six chickens within the city. I think that's too, it's too blanket of a decision because we have such a varied lot sizes in the city. Myself, I own seven and a half acres out on Prairie Road. Six chickens on seven and a half acres is not very many. Currently, I have 10 chickens on, on the property right now, have for over a year, and have had no, no issues with the neighbors, no complaints in smell, sound, anything like that. So I think revisiting that and, and adding in additional quali- quantifiers for, qualifiers for acre, chickens per acre, and then possibly revisiting the allowance of roosters on more than five acres. That's my comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Sorry, making notes. All right, that's it for public comments tonight, and we'll move on to discussions and presentations. And our first one is the Mayor Lyle Anderson Gold Leaf Awards, and we started this several years ago, and it is a great honor to be able to bestow this each year to two individuals that are most deserving of, of celebrating our volunteerism here in, in the community of Lebanon. And as, as it so be, it, this week is National Volunteer Week, and so it is fitting that we do gather here today to honor these two remarkable individuals who dedicate, dedic- whose dedication to service exemplifies the spirit of community involvement. Our first recipient will be Cash Vickers. Cash is a standout among, amongst, among his peers, actively involved in leadership roles across various school organizations. His extensive volunteer work includes significant contributions to serve Lebanon, the Rotary Pancake Breakfast, the Back to School Fair, Shop with a Cop, and numerous other initiatives. Cash's passion for service and his commitment to bettering his community through hands-on engagement make him a true embodiment of the values this award represents. His dedication is an inspiration to us all, and it is with great pride that we recognize Cash Vickers for his exemplary volunteerism. Cash, if you wouldn't mind, please come forward here.
Congratulations.
Next, it is my distinct honor to introduce this year's adult recipient for the Mayor Lyle Anderson Gold Leaf Award, Emily Huckabee. Emily is a pillar of our community, currently serving as the President of the Lebanon Downtown Optimist Club, Vice President of the Lebanon Area Chamber of Commerce, and President of the Lebanon-Lakleet County Library Foundation. Through her leadership and dedication, Emily has been driving, been a driving force behind many of our major community events, including the annual Christmas parade, Miss Merry Christmas pageants, and the Business Expo. Her efforts have not only brought joy and celebration to our city, but have also strengthened the bonds within our community. Emily's unwavering commitment and service truly exemplify the spirit of this award. So it is my honor to present this year's adult recipient of the Mayor Lyle Anderson Gold Leaf Award to Emily Huckabee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Cash and Emily. That, um, that award is always, like, probably the hardest thing I do. It is always so hard to pick and really just kind of throw a dart at a wall and, but I don't, I don't mean to discount what you guys do in the community at all, but it is truly tremendous what, um, how many great volunteers we have in the community, and I, I commend each and every one of them, and especially you two tonight, so thank you very much. All right. So now I have a proclamation for Local Government Week. Whereas local governments in Missouri make important decisions that affect the lives of all Missourians, and whereas local governments are the level of government closest to the people, and whereas local governments include city councils, county commissions, school boards, among others, and whereas local governments are the ultimate expression of grassroots democracy, and whereas local governments play an essential role in the quality of life in Missouri communities, now therefore, I, Mayor Jared Carr, City of Lebanon, do hereby proclaim May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Local Government Week. In the City of Lebanon, and urge all citizens to join me in recognizing local governments as they serve their communities, and witness whereof I've herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lebanon to be affixed this 22nd day of April, 2024. So thank you again to everybody that's involved in local governments, and Lebanon wouldn't be what it is without, without what our, what our local government does. Congratulations to them again. Uh, next up is the Chamber of Commerce presentation.
I don't have anything. Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you for having me today. I'm excited to share just a really brief update about the chamber and how things have been going so far for me. I've been in the role almost a year now. It'll be a year next month, so really excited to share these updates. I'll start with our membership numbers really quick. So there continues to be a steady increase in our membership numbers. Right now, we are at 239 paid members, 60 of those new, which means they were not paid members last year. So I find that really encouraging, that we have that many people wanting to join us. Want to share too about our partnerships. Our success is deeply intertwined with our valuable partnerships, such as the one that we have with the City of Lebanon, and also downtown Lebanon, Lebanon Ready, and the schools. Additionally, our partnership with the city and the downtown Lebanon district has led to a weekly rotation at the fort, where we visit them for the Arrive Strong Community Fair. This is an opportunity for us to go and share about our community and hopefully bring the soldiers and their families to the community to visit our businesses, our restaurants, and potentially even some of the events that we hold. We also have a strong relationship with the schools through GoCaps. This has provided an opportunity for students to come and job shadow me. I don't know how much they learned, other than that I'm very busy and I go to a lot of meetings, but it was a really good opportunity for the students to kind of follow me around and have some conversations about their futures and maybe their career choices that they're looking at. And I'm also delighted to share that 16 of our members this year decided to support Friends of the Fort through their chamber memberships. This totaled $3,256 in contributions, and that just reflects our members' commitment to giving back to our community, which is something I'm really proud of, proud of our members for. So as far as improvements, innovation is key to our growth, and during our strategic planning sessions, which I do have copies of, if anyone's interested in looking at, during these sessions, we did update our mission and vision statements. So our new mission statement is, "The Lebanon Area Chamber of Commerce leads, collaborates, and supports local businesses, driving economic growth and enhancing community life." Our new vision statement is, "We aspire to build a connected environment where every business and organization can excel together." I feel like this is something that we've been really working hard to achieve and work towards, and it's something that I'm really happy that we, we've updated to reflect. We also revamped our membership structure to empower our members to choose the level of membership that best suits their needs. This has been very popular. Our members like getting to see that they're getting more benefits when they pay more money, or if they just want the base membership and that's all they want, then they can do that as well. So it's been a lot of fun seeing the different levels that people are choosing and why, and, and they seem to really enjoy that. Also, our Business Builders Luncheons, they have undergone a transformation focusing on informative and educational topics that support our members' professional development. They've been very well attended, and we've moved those to the Civic Center meeting rooms for most of the months. The only one we'll have, I think, a difference will be for May, because of graduation. But it's been a really great opportunity for speakers to talk not just about the services they provide, but engage the people that come in topics that are informative and might help them with their businesses. And also, we are moving our business after hours to quarterly instead of monthly, and beginning in May, we are going to start doing them at First Fridays, which will help us collaborate even further with downtown and create a better networking opportunity for our members who attend those. And also, our new Chamber Live Morning Show, that's been something that has been really successful, that I'm very excited about. It's providing a platform to spotlight our members and promote local events. We've included the city and downtown as recurring guests to come and speak monthly to update on different events that are going on. And as we look ahead into the upcoming year, I'm really excited about the possibilities. Renewals will be upon us in October, so I'm looking for more growth than we've had even this year. One of the key initiatives that we're exploring too is a partnership with Lebanon Ready, with the Leadership Lebanon Program. This will be something that will help further develop leadership skills within our community. And I'm also very excited to announce that we are preparing to relaunch the ambassadors program. So this is going to serve as a dynamic membership committee. Ambassadors will play a vital role in attending ribbon cuttings and reaching out to members to ensure that they're utilizing all of their member benefits and that they understand them. This program is going to engage not only our outgoing board members, but hopefully will cultivate potential new board members as well. So I'm really excited about this group of individuals that we're getting together for that. And in conclusion, I'm just really grateful for all of the support and collaboration from the city, and together, we are definitely building a stronger, more vibrant community. Thank you, guys.
Ashley, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
You've done a great job with, since you've taken this over, the image of the city, the image of the chamber. I mean, it's just unbelievable, the change so quickly that you've done. You're doing a great job.
Thanks, Bob. I appreciate that.
Ditto.
Ditto. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ashley. Appreciate it. All right, Board of Public Works update. Richard?
Mayor, Council, I'd like to run through kind of what the Board of Public Works have been working on over the last, since July. They've had 13 meetings. They, uh, they've all traveled to Prairie State Energy Campus, which is about an hour southeast of St. Louis, to tour a coal generating facility that we receive power from, as well as went into the, the coal mine there on site to see how coal is, is mined in, with modern technology. They've approved 21 resolutions, varying from engineering tasks, material equipment purchases, mutual aid agreements, and then also a partnership with MOCA to provide home energy audit services that we, was provided by a private company that decided to get out of that business. So that was a good partnership with a non-for-profit to do that. They have recently reviewed and approved the capital improvement plan for 2026 through 2030, and approved the 2025 budget, as well as 2025 utility, utility rates. I will give you a, a little bit of a high-level view of the, what rates they have approved. We've, we've got a, like everyone, we've experienced a pretty aggressive inflation rate on materials and equipment. Electric, we, a little over 200% increases over the past handful of years, and around 300% for water, mainly, while this is, the poles have, have doubled in price. You can see where transformers have, have doubled in price, and, and wire, overhead wire has, you know, four times the money. We, availability has gotten a lot better, but I would say the, the cost has not retracted. It's more like plateaued. I don't, I know what you're experiencing, Councilman Evans, but that's kind of what we're seeing, is it kind of plateaued. On the water side of things, PDC has tripled in price, and brass is, is even over doubled. So what, what we're handling here on, on inflation rates is mainly equipment and materials. Energy cost has been fairly stable with the, with the cheaper, uh, cost of natural gas has kept the energy market pretty, pretty stable, except for extreme weather events. Well, now I'm not able to advance it. So with that, uh, the board has passed a increase to our average residential customer on a 1,200 kilowatt hour a month of $8.58, and a water increase of $3 a month. The sewer will be no change, and this coming budget would have a update built into the budget to look at those costs of services for all of the utilities moving forward. To look at kind of where we're at compared to some of our neighboring utilities or utilities of similar size, uh, on the, we're, we're lower than, than most everyone. On the water, significantly lower. Sewer will ride in there with Rala and a little bit under Springfield. Monet's, Monet's cheaper than us on, on the, on the water, or I mean, sorry, on the sewer and then on a little bit on the electric. They, uh, Monet is heavily a natural gas, uh, electricity down there. Basically, if you looked down at the bottom, our bundle cost for our average residential customer would be $196.11. If you look at Monet, it's about $180. Marshall, which is in the northern part of the state, similar, similar city as us, they're at 226, and depending on whether it's summer or winter. And then Waynesville is 220. For our neighbors that are out in the county, it would be Lakleet Electric, providing their electricity, the Water District providing their water, and then Public Water District Number Three provides the sewer. That would be around $227 for, for the comparables to the City of Lebanon. The Springfield is a little out of whack. The rate, the sewer rates are a little, are quite a little bit higher than us, and their water is. Their electric, they have a, they have a base on their, a fuel adjustment called, in their rate, and it, it is, uh, it is indexed off of natural gas, and we don't have that information to know how much lower. It is lower than what is shown there because we just use their base rate. We have, we have a feeling that they're probably indexing lower because of natural gas being depressed in cost. Rala, our friends at Rala is 192, so we're right, right in there with, with Rala. Do you have any questions on the rates that the board are putting in place to go before you with the budget?
Richard, I was going to ask about the sewage, wasn't raised, but we were going to be cleaning out those, those clay. You remember the clean out that we talked about the last time? So if there's any damage occurred by that, would we maybe need to wait to look?
So that's a, that's an overall, uh, large study, and we're hoping to get through, clean that, get, get the modeling data off, off of that and be able to have a, a good document that'll have a decade's worth of, of, uh, direction on capital improvement projects. I don't suspect that's on an immediate rate. I would say that with that, with the, once we identify those capital improvement needs, then we'll, we'll start looking at a, a different rate, but that'll be appropriate to fund those. I will say on like the large commercial and industrial rates, it's kind of difficult to categorize them because it's all based upon how they use their energy, how, you know, what their energy usage is versus how much demand they have, and that, and that are calculations, but we're, we're competitive throughout the, our rate schedule. Any questions?
Do we see any effects of the solar?
Uh, this.
Is that a big enough thing we could?
Solar installations have slowed quite a little bit in, in our, in our community, yeah.
I mean, ours. Is it keeping the peak down, or can you tell?
Well, it, it is good energy in the summertime.
Yeah.
But to give you an idea, on that facility generates, you know, three megawatts, and this past winter, when it was cold, that one week we was cold, we peaked at 70 megawatts. So it's, it's a pretty small portion of our, our energy use.
Where did you say that coal powerhouse was located at? Get ours from?
It's about an hour southeast of St. Louis, being over in Illinois.
Really?
Yeah. If you're interested in going sometime, we could, we could. We could arrange that.
It's well worth the trip.
Yeah, we got a member right back here.
It's really incredible what they do.
Yeah. I tell you, the, the board is excellent to work with and keeps us answering questions and makes us better, better, uh, stirs for the, the citizens.
Great, that's great to hear, and, and we appreciate them taking their time out of their schedule as well to, to go to the meetings and participate and go to field trips and... Did you get a sack lunch with that or anything, Don?
Yeah.
But yeah, that's, that's, that's great, that, I appreciate the Board of Public Works. I know they, they do a lot, and, and there's a lot to it, and, and I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad they have it. I'm glad they, they're, they're doing well, and then to hear, hear the same from you, Richard, as well, that they're doing their part, so that's, that's great. Any other questions regarding Board of Public Works update, council? All right. We will move on. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move.
Take it.
Garner moved. Jordan seconded. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
All right, consent agenda is approved. Approved. Now on to Resolution 503. Entertained a motion to approve Resolution 503?
So moved.
Jordan moved.
Second.
Garner seconded. Any discussion or questions on that, council? Roll call, please.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes. Okay, Resolution 503 is adopted.
Mayor, if you don't care, I wouldn't mind calling on that a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Earlier, the city council got to look at the 2040 update for our call plan. This, this tap grant for the sidewalks over 127 was identified within that, within that call plan, and so we're, we're moving forward some, with some of that stuff that was already identified.
Yeah, I think one of, one of the maps pointed that out.
Yep.
When you guys get a chance to look at that closer, there's a little dotted line that goes across there, so.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Uh, Resolution 504. Entertained a motion to approve that?
Motion to approve.
Wall?
Second.
Second.
Evans?
I have a question.
On the second, yes.
I noticed that it says there'll be a public hearing in May. Where will that be? In this resolution?
It'll be here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
Yep. Any other questions, comments?
Got a date or anything yet? Got a date or anything yet for that?
Yeah, it's actually in the resolution, the dates. Derek, if you can scroll up just a bit in the resolution, I'm sorry, scroll down. Keep on going.
November 13th there.
Yeah, right there, um, the 13th of May.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Evans, or excuse me, Mizell.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 504 is adopted. Onto the second. Onto the second readings there, and in light of Mr. Strickler's comments, and I think there was another comments that you guys had on, on an email here as well, I would like to pull back Council Bill sixty-six seventy-one for its second reading at this time, so staff has time to adjust that accordingly and, and take some, take that input into consideration, if that would be all right with council reading a motion for that to withdraw that from the-
I'll make a motion.
I'm seconding.
Okay, Mitchell moved, and Wall seconded. Roll call, please.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Okay, we will withdraw sixty-six seventy-one for the time being and move it to most likely be on the next docket there, May thirteenth, if, if that, but we'll get some, we'll get some language and change that around. So appreciate the comments, and that's what, that's what we're here for. We want to make sure we, we, we work for everybody, so thank you very much for coming in. I appreciate it. All right, first and second readings there, and Council Bill sixty-six seventy-two. Jessica?
Mayor and council, an RFP was issued for the lawn maintenance services to city properties. Two proposals were received and scored by city staff. Staff is recommending entering to a three-year contract with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms with Dunn Mowing LLC for lawn maintenance services. The overall cost has increased by five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-two cents per each mowing cycle, but that includes two additional new properties, Boswell and Gaskinade Park, that were not part of the last RFP with Dunn Mowing. If you remove those two properties, the overall cost per each mowing cycle only increased by thirteen dollars and forty-two cents.
That's pretty good with the increase in fuel and everything else. That's, we've got him locked up for three years.
This will be, the pricing will lock all the way until next May, and then he'll, he can come back and ask for a percentage increase. Normally, it's been very small, and, I mean, overall costs have, over the five years almost that we've used him-
Mm-hmm.
Has been very minimal.
Does a good job.
The, the two nuance moors we just purchased, one was for the airport and one was for the Parks Department. Is that?
One was for facilities and one was for parks, yes.
Parks. And parks basically now just mows ball fields?
The infield of the ball fields for the most part, yes.
So they don't really have seasonal workers for that anymore?
No.
Okay.
No, they took-
Just want to make sure.
Yep, yep. Staff has took away a lot of the seasonal positions, and we use Dunn Mowing instead for those.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an executed agreement between the city and Dunn Mowing LLC for city facility lawn maintenance services.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Evans, roll call, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
And Wall?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an executed agreement between the city and Dunn Mowing LLC for city facility lawn maintenance services.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Wall and Mizell on the second. Roll call, please.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-two becomes ordinance sixty-nine sixteen.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Jessica. Council Bill sixty-six seventy-three. Travis?
Mayor and council, this is for the purchase of electric materials to extend our three-phase feeder service to the new construction for Title Wave Auto Spa there at the entrance of Walmart. We received four bids. Graybar had the best bid, did not have the lowest bid, but per specs, they were the closest to our specs for some of our underground equipment. Some of the other bid, other bidders bid some off-brand stuff that we don't normally use. So Graybar bid what we specked out, so they are the best bid. So, yeah, their bid was sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars. Any questions? That is for the materials and the wire as well. Transformers, nobody bid on the transformers, so we're gonna have to put that out as a separate bid.
They're hard to get. Wait five years.
Just for an notification, is this something the city normally bears this cost? This the normal cost that the city bears?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, for us, it's beneficial to extend our feed, so we're getting the feeder extension, plus we're getting revenue from the business down line.
Great. Any other questions, comments? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, approving the purchase of electric underground material from Graybar to service new construction on South Jefferson.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Mizell? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Okay, second reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, approving the purchase of electric underground material from Graybar to service new construction on South Jefferson.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Jordan and Evans on the second. Roll call, please.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-three becomes ordinance sixty-nine seventeen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Travis. Council Bill sixty-six seventy-four. Elliot?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is for the Olson Task Order for the conceptual drawings for Ashley Park. It'll include drawings for new parking lot at the lower entrance and the new, or front entrance, splash pad, playground, ball field, concession stands, new dog park and stuff like that for Ashley Park. The cost is not to exceed fifty-nine thousand.
Are you gonna move the dog park?
Possibly, because the way they want to redesign that new par, the parking lot off the main entrance is have it kind of dead end by the restrooms, so that way people that come in that entrance will just use the playground and dog park, and then if you want to use the ball fields, you'll come in off Goldenwood. That way, there's not all that traffic running through there that's kind of dangerous for kids running across there.
That's a good idea.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an execute work order number thirty-nine with Olson for preliminary design services for the Ashley Park Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell and Evans, roll call, please.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to entering to an execute work order number thirty-nine with Olson for preliminary design services for the Ashley Park Improvement Project.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Wall and Mizell on the second. Roll call, please.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-four becomes ordinance sixty-nine eighteen. Sorry, lost my place.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elliot. Excuse me. Under Council Bill sixty-six seventy-five, chief?
Uh, thank you, Mayor and council. This is an ordinance asking for the approval of purchase of twenty-five sets of dual-certified protective gear for the firefighters. It's about seven hundred and sixteen dollars a set. We would wear this gear whenever we're fighting grass fires, brush fires, and performing technical rescues. It's much, much lighter than our bulky bunker gear, much, much less expensive, may take some wear and tear off of that gear. We have several members who, including me, although they tell me I don't fight fire anymore, whose gear is out of date, and we have some that don't have any gear, so this would put all twenty-five of us in the same stuff, and it has a shelf life of about ten years. Yeah, this is a cooperative bid through Sourcewell, is how we bid this project.
Great. Any questions, council? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing the purchase of twenty-five sets of dual-certified rescue and wildland gear from Feld Fire for the Fire Department.
Most approved. Second.
Jordan and Garner, roll call, please.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, authorizing the purchase of twenty-five sets of dual-certified rescue and wildland gear from Feld Fire for the Fire Department.
Move on the second.
Second, second.
Mitchell and Mizell on the second. Roll call, please.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-five becomes ordinance sixty-nine nineteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. The first reading of Council Bill sixty-six seventy-six. Joe?
Uh, Mayor and council, this be the ordinance about dangerous structures, and this was last updated in nineteen ninety-seven. We went over this April eighth at our work session. This ordinance will help with clear procedures and declaring a structure unsafe or dangerous. This ordinance update has, will help us describe the procedures on posting property, notifying the owner, and abating process, and the city attorney, Chris Allen, did review that verbiage that was brought up at the work session and has okayed that. Any questions?
On the definitions, we describe the definitions, we're furtive words rather than trying to re-describe the definitions, so I do beg your spears.
Thanks so much.
Any questions, comments? I want to say, great job, but I know-
Good job, yes.
Both of these are not-
This is the little one.
Yeah, these are the little ones. Both of these, yeah, next, I mean, I'm gonna say the same thing the next one too, so. Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, amending the city code of ordinances by repealing chapter eight, Buildings and Construction, Article Four, Dangerous Buildings in its entirety, and enacting in lieu thereof a newly created chapter eight, Article Four, Dangerous Buildings.
Most approved.
Second.
Jordan and Wall? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-one passes first reading. We placed them the May thirteenth docket for a second reading. On the Council Bill sixty-six seventy-seven.
Okay. This is updating our current building code from the two thousand and six version to the two thousand and twenty-one version, and this update was part of our council goals for the last two or three years. You know, we kept putting it off because we couldn't get it done because we were so busy. So updating this, last time we updated it was in two thousand and eight, and again, we went over all these changes at April eighth work session. So a building code cycle gets updated every three years. So we're in the two thousand and six, so there was a nine, the twelve, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-four is just coming out, so we're going to the twenty-one code. You're looking at updating the residential code, the building code, property maintenance code, plumbing code, gas and fuel code, mechanical code, fire code, existing building code, and electric code. We are not adopting the energy conservation code. Updating the building code will help in our ISO rating, and it also conforms to new building types of material and construction methods. In the building code, in the twenty-one code, residential structures require to have automatic fire sprinkler systems. The state of Missouri has a revised statute that says the property owner has a right to approve or, to accept or reject that. So we put that clause in there, so residents do not have to do that if they do not want to. Our fault. Receptacles will need to be installed in the bedroom only. GFCIs will be installed like our current code is today. The big change is you will have to have a carbon monoxide detector in your home if you have a fuel-fired appliance or wood-burning appliance, or you have an attached garage. And that detector will have to be outside the sleeping room and on whatever level that the fuel or gas, or the wood or gas-fired appliance is on. And then on new construction, they have to be interconnected. In the building code, twenty-pound snow load, the wind load changed from ninety miles to one oh seven. The frost depth is eighteen inches, and we removed the ice barrier for the roof. Any questions?
That's it?
That's all I'm gonna say. Probably too much.
You gotta read the rest.
You gotta read the rest if you want to know, right?
I got the book in the car.
Looks. That's a tremendous job on that, by the way. So definitely-
Lot of work.
Lot of work, and, and you, you and your team should be commended for it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. First reading, then, I guess. Any other questions or comments? Okay, first reading.
An ordinance by the city council of the city of Lebanon, Laklee County, Missouri, here and after referred to as city, amending the city code of ordinances by repealing chapter eight, Article Three, Construction Codes in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof a newly created chapter eight, Article Three, and amending chapter eighteen, Fire Prevention, Protection, and Control by adding section eighteen dash thirty-two, Fire Code Adopted by Reference, Copies to Be Maintained.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Wall and Evans? Roll call, please.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mizell?
Yes.
Wall?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Garner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-six seventy-seven passes first reading. We placed them May thirteenth docket for second reading.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. That's all for ordinances tonight. We'll start, any comments from staff in the audience tonight? New chief, any, any comments? Chief Harrison?
No, sir, just enjoying getting to work.
Okay, great. Chief Snodgrass? Richard? Lena? Counselor?
No, ma'am.
Mike?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Evans? Mrs. Mitchell?
Not the nightmare, thank you.
Mr. Mizell?
Thank you, but no.
Mr. Wall?
Nothing, ma'am.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm going on vacation tomorrow. I got nothing.
I'm going on vacation tomorrow, I got nothing.
How long do you want to stay here? What does keep going? We could probably read that code, Joe, probably. He could probably decide some of that code, right?
Take it with you.
All right, Mr. Garner?
Just like to keep the Edson family in your thoughts and prayers, they're doing remarkably. It's truly a miracle, so keep the prayers coming.
Definitely. Congratulations again to Cash and Emily for winning the volunteer, Mayor, Mayor Lael Anderson Volunteer, or Gold Beef Award, sorry, for volunteerism here in Lebanon, congratulations to them. May second will be our next time that we're together, which will be the work session next Thursday and it will start at five o'clock as well, just so you guys know, that's our budget meeting. We'll start five, five PM on that, so early, early breakfast, six thirty National Day of Prayer and then work session at five. Be a long day. Then our council meeting for May, May thirteenth at six PM, that'll be the normal time there